On the agenda is to approve the agenda, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by, um...
Mr. Shuford.
Mr. Shuford. Okay, Mr. Shuford, and we have a second by Mr. Barksdale. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. Okay, at this time, uh, we normally have our moment of silence, and we'll do that. But before we do, as most of you know, last meeting, we, uh... There was a motion made for us to open our... Open our meetings with invocation. And I received a, uh, an email, and of course, followed by a letter, from the Freedom From Religion Foundation out of Wisconsin. And, uh, so I contacted, uh, our superintendent, and the superintendent contacted our board attorney. And after looking at it, um, I want to give you an update of what he and I and Dr. Ritt talked about. But, uh, this is what he tells me. "I recommend a little more description based on the letter received from the Freedom From Religion Foundation as follows. Board members, I review the possibility of adding prayer to the start of our meetings with our board attorney. And for our... For this to be constitutional, such prayer cannot be secretarial or proselyzing. And a board member prayer cannot favor or disparage a particular religion. With these legal rulings in mind, we will have additional conversation about this in the January board work session." We're going to have our attorney down, and he's gonna go over the things we can do and we can't do. And after we talk to him, and I told everybody on the board, I wanted them all to hear it from him, and we'd go from that point. Now, with that being said, we're gonna have a moment of silence. But one thing that I want to remind you of, that, uh... Our North Star is guided by our children here in this county. And we need to keep that our priority as board is our children in this county. Now, there's a lot of things going on, and the weather hasn't really helped a lot. We've still got children displaced. We've got children still haven't, you know, recovered their homes and that sort of thing. And so when we have a moment of silence, let's think about the things that we really need to be concerned with, especially our board meetings or our children, okay? So let's take a moment of silence at this time. Thank you very much. At this time, we normally have the presentation... Presentation of colors from the McDowell High School Naval Junior ROTC. However, because school was out today, they're not able to travel and be here. But we do have a very distinguished board member with military background. Of course, we got, uh, Mr. Carson here too as well. So, Mr. Carson and Mr. Baker, would you two stand up here and lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, talking about, uh, the presentation of colors in our NJROTC, I am so happy that, uh, on our committees tonight, we'll go over those committees as part of our agenda. But I had two board members that wanted to represent the NJROTC. Of course, that's Mr. Baker, and all you guys think that all he can do is sell tires. He was a drill instructor in the Army during the Vietnam era. So he, you know, he might be tougher than woodpecker lips, I don't know. Also, uh, Mr. McGuinness from the Sheriff's Department, he was actually a member of our ROTC, and he said, "Man, I want to be that." So we got two great people that are gonna chair that committee and bring us back a report every month. And I'm proud of you guys, and I know they're gonna be proud because they haven't had a lot of representation in the past, but they're gonna definitely have it now. But thank you, gentlemen, very much. Okay, Mr. Ritt, Dr. Ritt.
All right, thank you. So, um, just a couple of... I guess everybody's just used to hearing me on the telephone here lately as I'm calling to dismiss school or maybe tell you it's a two-hour delay. But I hope to say that that was the last call that you got today at about four o'clock. Um, we hope to get back on a regular schedule. Uh, we are on a two-hour delay tomorrow, so I will just let y'all know that upfront, so... Uh, last week, we welcomed our students back and ushered in 2025 with some positive momentum and a little chilly weather. I'm sure everyone enjoyed the day at home in the snow last Friday and again today. It was fun to see the kids out in the snow. I know in my neighborhood, they were out there watching them make snowmen and snowballs and all that stuff. It's good, we need a good snow day. I'm glad the weather cooperated with our plans, and everyone was safe over the break. Uh, now, as much as the kids don't want to hear this, let's hope, uh, that we've had the last of the weather for the 24-25 school year. I think we've had just about enough weather with... between a hurricane and some snow. Um, over the Christmas break, our women's and men's basketball teams and our wrestling teams, as well as our NJROTC rifle and drill teams competed successfully. Uh, we've got some things to be really proud of. Um, our Lady Titans basketball team represent one of only two undefeated teams in the state at the 4A state level, so they're really on a roll. I know our boys are right behind them with only one loss, and the wrestling team's just really having a fantastic year. Uh, we're very proud of our students. Also, keeping on the theme of teams, I'm proud of our leadership team who earned another grant just before the break. Uh, they'll be talking about this grant tonight. A special thank you to Suzanne Rampy, Crystal Hamby, and Ashley MacArthur for their work in securing roughly $6.86 million in the school-based mental health grant. This is the third grant that we've received over the last year and a half, and I'm very proud of this team's effort to put our students' needs first and actively find ways to support and improve our schools. Board, the clock is ticking. On earning a significant state grant for school construction, we are firmly positioned for this, especially with the completion of our studies. With your support, we have something to really sink our teeth into in 2025. As 2025 begins on Main Street, we must remember that it also starts on Jones Street in Raleigh with many of the new faces sworn in last week. Over the next few months, we have several opportunities to work with our state-elected officials to share our needs and express our gratitude as they begin work on the state's next biennial budget. In addition to our local legislative events, I have scheduled one in Raleigh on January 25th and plan to attend one in Tryon on January 27th. These meetings are expected before the beginning of the General Assembly's long session, which will be in March. We also plan to meet with our representatives again in Raleigh on the education days, and that comes at the end of March. 2025 also allows us to continue working on our book review. Over the past number of months, our district has had... Has used a community-involved process to review book challenges based on our... And based on our experiences, the numbers of books under review, and the desire of the board to bring clarity to this process, especially within... With regard to educational suitability, I have decided to modify the procedures by expediting the review of certain materials administratively. I will also report the results of our modified process to the board in the coming weeks. Finally, tonight, I'm excited to announce that we have several recognitions for students and staff, and I want to remind everyone that January is Board Appreciation Month. Thank you.
Sorry, you may have a little bit more.
All right. For our student recognitions, I'll ask Ms. Amy Dadd to come up.
Good evening, Mr. Frank, Mr. Abernathy, Dr. Ritt, members of the board, and the same guests. I'm delighted to share with you the outstanding artistic talents of our McDowell County School students through our annual Christmas card contest. Each school in our district selected one exceptional young artist whose work captured the spirit of the holiday season. Once selected, these cards were sent to the central office, where they were put together to create a presentation. And district card that was sent out to all school districts in North Carolina. Our 2024 Christmas Card Contest winners are as follows, and boys and girls and young men and women, if you'll walk up here, we have a certificate for you, and we're gonna ask you to stand up here so that we can celebrate you. From Eastfield Global Magnet School in 3rd grade, we have Daisy Ibarra. East McDowell Middle School in 8th grade, we have Alan Ramirez. From Foothills Community School in 7th grade, we have Charlie DiHold. From Glenwood Elementary School in 4th grade, we have May Knype. From Marion Elementary School in the 4th grade, we have Noah Grooms. From the McDowell Academy of Innovation in 9th grade, Alejandra Bustos. From McDowell Early College in 9th grade, we have Ariel Moore. From McDowell High School in 11th grade, we have Christina Cannon. From Nebo Elementary School in 5th grade, we have Tilly Noblet. From North Cove Elementary School, 4th grade, Adeline Hall. From Old Ford Elementary School in 5th grade, we have Addison Walden. Pleasant Gardens Elementary School in 5th grade, we have Jana Haley. From the Summit Academy in 9th grade, we have Kayden Riddle. From West Marion Elementary School in 5th grade, we have Michaela Lewis. And last, but certainly not least, from West McDowell Middle School in 8th grade, we have Lisbia Ledbetter. These young talented artists remind us of the creativity, joy, and spirit of the holiday season. Their artwork not only showcases individual talent, but also reflects our own school community. And if you'll look around at the screens, that is the Christmas card that was sent out from our district to other districts across the state of North Carolina. And if you'll notice, each of their cards has something that represents their own school, whether that be their mascot or their motto. And so not only are they representing their own school, but when we put it together, it truly represents, um, the spirit of McDowell County Schools. So congratulations to each of them, and let's give them another big round of applause. Now, the mama in me is gonna tell you guys they want pictures, so you gotta get, uh, all together up there so moms and dads and grandparents can come take pictures. And if you'll turn those around, guys, if you want to turn them around and show them, there's your actual Christmas cards on the back so you can see how amazing, um, these young artists truly are. Thank you all so much, you can have a seat now. Our second recognition for students, um, this evening is for students who participated in the North Carolina School Boards Association, um, annual poster contest. The annual poster contest is open to elementary students throughout the 116-member districts. The 2024 theme was "My Classroom Is A Time Machine." NCSBA encourages students to draw a picture of themselves in the future, achieving their dreams and making a positive impact on the world thanks to their education. The top posters, as determined by the judges, are displayed during the annual North Carolina School Boards Association Conference in November. McDowell County Schools were thrilled to have four, um, of our students selected, um, as winners. So our first one is Haley Bishop. She's in 5th grade at Glenwood Elementary School, and she received honorable mention. Our second student was Jessica Escalara Ortega. She's in 4th grade at Glenwood Elementary, and she received honorable mention as well. Next, we have Journey English in 2nd grade at West Marion Elementary, who received honorable mention as well. And next, we have Taya Harmon for 3rd grade at West Marion Elementary, who received honorable mention. So again, I just want to point out that these posters were hung up for all of the school board members who went to the school board conference to see, and we couldn't be more proud of our McDowell County School students. Let's give them one more round of applause. Yes, Ms. Ray, they would like for you to come up for your picture as well. Ladies, hold on just one second. You're not done with me yet, I got two more. Um, I am, um, excited tonight to honor one of our principals who was selected as the 2024-25 Principal of the Year, and that is Ms. Angela Wilkerson. So Ms. Wilkerson, if you could come on up. I'd like to share a little bit with you about our process for choosing the Principal of the Year. The process for choosing the Principal of the Year begins with a nomination from McDowell County Schools Leadership Team. Directors and principals... Ms. Wilkerson, you guys stay up here. Directors and principals have the opportunity to nominate a principal they believe creates a climate of inquiry that challenges the school community to continually repurpose itself by building on its core values and beliefs. Principals from around the district then vote on someone who was deserving of the honor. Ms. Wilkerson was very gracious when she accepted, um, this nomination. She was honored to be named Principal of the Year, and the recognition is a reflection of the students and staff that she has a privilege to work with every day. She's so blessed to be a part of the supportive McDowell County Schools Administration Team. Let me tell you a little bit about... More about Ms. Wilkerson. Ms. Wilkerson is a McDowell High graduate of the class of 1987. She attended Appalachian State University and graduated with her degree in elementary education in 1991. She began her career as a teacher at Nebo Elementary, where she taught 5th grade and combination class and 2nd grade over the next five years. Ms. Wilkerson then transferred to Eastfield Elementary, where she spent 17 years of her career teaching 1st, 2nd, 5th, and 6th grade. In 2016, Ms. Wilkerson earned her Master's of School Administration from Appalachian State University. And in 2013, Ms. Wilkerson transitioned from teaching to become the Director of Federal Program for McDowell County Schools. In 2016, Ms. Wilkerson took the position of Assistant Principal at West Marion Elementary, where Mr. Carson and I had the honor of being the principals that worked with her over the next couple of years. And then, um, she moved into her principalship at Marion Elementary in 2021. So we could not be more proud of you, Ms. Wilkerson, and what a very deserving honor. Let's give her one full round of applause. She's also joined tonight by her husband, Ron Wilkerson, who tried to take some of the credit, but we'll give it all to her. No, I'm just teasing. Our last recognition this evening is for Ms. Crystal Hamby. So Ms. Hamby, if you'll come on up. "It is my great, uh, pleasure this evening to recognize and celebrate Ms. Crystal Hamby for being the President-elect for the North Carolina Association of Federal Education Program Administrators. This achievement not only reflects Ms. Hamby's exceptional leadership abilities, but also the impact that Ms. Hamby's experience and knowledge has on the students of North Carolina. The North Carolina Association of Federal Education Program Administrators, NCFIPA for short, plays a vital role in supporting federal program directors across the state, fostering collaboration between seasoned veterans and newcomers to ensure the effective implementation of federal education initiatives. Under Ms. Hamby's leadership, this organization will continue its mission of providing essential guidance, professional development, and networking opportunities for education administrators throughout North Carolina. Ms. Hamby brings to this position a wealth of experience and a deep understanding of federal education programs. Her commitment to mentorship and professional development aligns perfectly with NCFIPA's core mission of supporting both new and experienced, um, federal program directors. Their vision for facilitating knowledge transfers between veteran directors and new administrators will undoubtedly strengthen our educational system's capacity to serve North Carolina students. I'm confident that under Ms. Hamby's guidance, the NCFIPA will continue to grow as a vital resource for education administrators across our state. Her election to this position is not just a personal achievement, but a win for our entire educational community. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Hamby on this well-deserved recognition."
All right, I think I'm next up.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Frank. Uh, tonight is also Board Appreciation Night. We've got a special spotlight on the... on the board there. Um, I'm gonna go to you just with the... One of the things that I like to do is, um, is do a little research before you start to... start to speak. Uh, so with Board Appreciation Month in full swing, I thought I would do some research and share some information with you. My favorite research tool happens to be Google. Y'all heard of it? Google AI, now as much as we know that AI can't replace a school board or a superintendent. It can surely help answer a quick question. When I asked Google what it means to be a school board member, this is what it was said. "A school board member is an elected official who sets the vision and goals for public schools in their community. They are responsible for representing the values and needs of their constituents." Responsibilities. I'm not gonna read all the verbiage, but I will tell you, it consists of policymaking, advocacy, communication, advising, goal-setting, and education philosophy. How's it doing so far? Pretty good. Roles in the community. The school board members are valuable assets to their community. They are essential in catalyzing change. Now, I would say that Google was 95% accurate. I think, Mr. Frank, you said something at the beginning of this that Google left out. "The most critical aspect of being a board member is to make every decision with students' interest in mind. I believe this board has been led to do this work. They have been elected to their positions because they are known for demonstrating a student-first mentality and want to see the very best for the students of McDowell County. I am honored to work with this team and look forward to continuing a tradition of success with each of you. Board, I am grateful for what you do for our students and family. On behalf of the staff of McDowell County Schools, I sincerely thank you for all that you do to keep our students at the center of each decision you make." Uh, beside your chair tonight, we placed a small token of our appreciation. Uh, just there beside you, should have a little bag with a few little gifts in there. But we really appreciate you, folks. If you will join me, let's give this board a round of applause.
I, uh, I thank you, sir, and I know everybody here thanks them as well. Okay, our next item on the agenda is item number nine. And I feel it an honor that we get to hear from Mr. Joey Hill, our teacher representative. Mr. Hill, I really appreciate your, uh, monthly, uh, contribution. And, uh, I love that it's coming from Marion Elementary tonight.
Yes, this is well timed. Yes, indeed. I'm proud to say that I went to kindergarten at Marion Elementary. And then escaped to PG, I'm kidding. So yes, tonight, we are going to hear about Marion Elementary, which is, of course, our Principal of the Year's stomping grounds. So we are a spotlight tonight, all right? Let me see, there's some great pictures. Uh, so this is a picture of the 5th grade field trip to Charlotte Motor Speedway. Now, if we'd done that when I was at Marion Elementary, I might have stayed. Anyway, uh, at Zmax Dragway on the 6th of December. These are 5th grade Bulldogs who just took their study of force and motion to the fast lane at the Charlotte Motor Speedway Zmax Dragway. At the Zmax Dragway, the students worked in pairs to build model cars and participated in racing events. The victorious team were rewarded a race driver bobblehead as a prize. Afterwards, the students were given a tour of the real race cars and taken on a lap around the speedway in a van, providing the students with a real-life experience of the speed and banking. The Bulldogs also enjoyed visiting the press area and the winner's circle. Oh, let's go back one. There you go. This is Caleb Butler, who is a 5th grader at Marion Elementary, and he reports as follows. "A couple of weeks ago, I went on a field trip to the Charlotte Motor Speedway. We got to build propeller cars and learn about friction. We also got to take a modified van around the track so we could experience what it feels like to go on the 36-degree angle track." I have to say, that is amazing experiential applied learning. That's phenomenal. All right. At Thanksgiving, Marion Elementary families came to the school and ate with their children. See, I have some pictures of that. Looking happy and thankful. All right. All right, here we are. This is Marion Elementary at Old Fort Strong event on the 7th of December. Mrs. Worsham, is that correct, Ms. Wilkerson?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Worsham, a 3rd grade teacher, and Brantley, a 4th grade student proudly represented Marion Elementary at the Old Fort Strong event on the 7th of December. They showcased the student-created trail guides, which were published last year through the Root Ed Grant Awarded to Marion Elementary. Here we see the kindergarten Bulldogs who visited the, I'm sorry, there are a lot of these pictures, and they're so cute, I can't stand it. All right. I teach students who are significantly bigger than I am, so these images of these wee ones reaching up to mail their letters to Santa, just, I don't know, my heart goes pitter-patter. All right. "Our kindergarten Bulldogs visited the local post office to send a super special letter to Santa. Huge thanks to Marion Police Department SRO FRI for coming along and keeping our Bulldogs safe and sound on their walking adventure through town." Did any of them have to be lifted up to the mailbox, or they all?
They all made it.
All right, all right. All right, so there's progress. That's great. All right. And then finally, we have the maintenance staff installing an additional water bottle filling station because, as we all know, hydrate or die. All right. So, all right, thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Wilkerson, for helping them. That's great.
Mr. Hill, I especially appreciate that, the letters to Santa Claus. My daughter is a kindergarten teacher at Marion Elementary, and Santa Claus got my letters as well, so thank you very much.
Got a little elf help you?
Yeah.
Ms. Smith, do we have any correspondence? We do have a request to address the board, and it's from Ms. House. If you'll come up to this thing.
Thank you so much. Actually, I think you'll find that a filing on my microphone, my voice is, uh, mistake. I was just so proud of you folks this morning, this afternoon, this evening, when I came in, because when I watched your December board meeting, I could see you taking a step at the end of the meeting where those of you who were newly elected...
Ma'am, before you get too far, could I, I need to go over some ground rules with you, if you don't mind. You've already got a few minutes, we won't count it against you, but I need to go over some ground rules with you, okay?
Okay.
Do you mind? Okay, first of all, I want to thank you so much for coming, and I want to thank you so much for speaking. But "public comment is a time for the board to hear from folks regarding issues related to the McDowell County School District. We ask that folks be mindful that we encourage families of small children to attend our meetings and watch our meetings online. We respect the right of speakers to give us their viewpoints on any issues related to the schools. However, we do balance those rights with the rights of families of young children when it comes to public comment. We ask that speakers make their points without making explicit comments. It is not appropriate or permissible for teachers in our schools to read explicit material to young children, and doing so in public comment is not appropriate either. In addition to public comment, the public is welcome to send the board emails through the superintendent. And all speakers, all speakers are reminded that these are just rules that we ask you honor, and of course, we've got a three-minute rule, and that lady behind you is keeping the clock, and like I said, we're not counting that against her, which she's already said, but she'll let you know when it's time, if you don't finish. But ma'am, I apologize for interrupting you, but go ahead. Thank you."
No problem. I practiced law for some 25 years, and I had to change my speech absolutely on the minute because when I came in here, I thought I was going to be begging you not to break your oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America. And what I found out when I got here was that y'all had realized that if you had a prayer, that you would be breaking that oath, and furthermore, you would be going against those of you who happen to be Christian, the vow you made when you started being a Christian, that you would not be like a Pharisee and pray on the street corner, and that you would remember to render unto Caesar what belonged to Caesar and to God what belonged to God. And I came in here and I saw you have a moment of silence, where the point of the moment of silence was exactly what I was going to ask you to make it be, which was to put the students first. And I just thank you for surprising me and making, and the example you set. When somebody starts to take a wrong step and then realizes, wait a minute, maybe I better think about that, you could not possibly set a better example for every student in the school system and every person in the entire community. Thank you. Thank you for seeing that you were about to take a wrong step and going back to consider how to take the right step.
All right, next up, we've got our unfinished business, and we are going to be giving a brief maintenance update. There's quite a few questions going along with what's going on at Old Fort, what's going on at Pleasant Gardens, and we hope to be able to give you guys an update on that. This week, the maintenance crew has been very busy working hard, clearing our school parking lots and bus lots. Those folks were Saturday and Sunday preparing our schools so we could return our staff to school today and then return our students to school tomorrow, so just letting folks know a little bit of what they've been up to. We also had the Transportation Department out checking roads this weekend, as well as again today. And that's something we do take very seriously, and folks, I want to also, while I have the opportunity to do that, to really thank our Will Keller, our Emergency Services Director, because he also is really a valuable asset when we start looking at road conditions and different things, as well as the Highway Patrol and the Department of Transportation. They have been really good, particularly working with us on this latest storm, as we found roads today that needed a little extra attention. And folks, there were very, very few roads out there by the end of the day that needed a little attention, but we were able to reach out to DOT, put those on their radar, and they're going to put a plow on it and some salt on it today, so we should be in good shape tomorrow. The biggest issues we've been having since the Christmas break has been HVAC. We've been having a few more issues with our HVAC. As a matter of fact, we had to reset the one here this morning. It was about 52 degrees when we came in, so sometimes those things trip during the night, and they got to get reset, just like the ones at home do. But I'll say that to say, particularly at Marion Elementary School, if you guys remember, not too long ago, we had to cancel practices the afternoon at Marion Elementary School. We had a power surge that came in through Duke Power that actually fried about three of our motors. We got those fixed back up here recently, and then we've had an issue at PG. I know Ms. Rayfield will be happy to know that we were able to get that one repaired today. We ended up having to spend a little bit of money to buy those portable heaters for classrooms there for a couple of days. This time of the year, you're going to have some HVAC issues, and I'm proud of the team for their quick work in getting those things addressed as quickly as possible. As far as what's going on with Pleasant Gardens and Old Fort, I want to go ahead and pull up the photos there, Garrett, if we can, and we'll start with that very first one. This is the mobile unit that has been placed out on the tennis courts at Pleasant Gardens. This is not the mobile unit of the past. This has two-by-six exterior walls. It's very solid when you walk in it. There's plenty of space there. You can see the, right on the exterior, each of those classrooms having, you know, the HVAC right there on the building. These buildings are nice. It's unfortunate that we only going to have them for a temporary period, but these are to help us with overcrowding there at the school. This is not something you can make happen as quickly as we'd like to, but we are proud that we've got those out there. There are four classrooms, all contained under one roof, and there's men's and, or girls and boys, I should say, we're talking about kindergarten through 5th grade. There are boys and girls bathrooms that are there, and there's, I think there was like three urinals and three toilets there too, so I mean, on each side, so there's plenty of space in them. I was actually pleasantly surprised by what I saw. We'll go on to the next picture. This is a picture, it seems kind of odd that this would be in there, but to me, that was the best news that I'd seen since Christmas break, and that is, that is the power pole that's designated to become a new power pole, which means Duke Power is going to be bringing in our power to that unit. At this point, that's what we're waiting on. We've passed our inspection from the county. We have power to get put in, and we're hooking up the water and sewer tomorrow, so we should be, if we can get, knocking on wood here, if we can get Duke Power out there this week, we should be able to start housing our students in there next week. Okay, Garrett? And again, that's the power supply where the Duke Power power will go into. Next picture. And this is inside. This is the boys restroom. Next picture. It's inside one of the classrooms. You can see that area in the middle. That is an area where you see a little different colorization on the tile. As soon as we can get the heat on, we'll actually wax that so it will match the rest of the tiles, but that's where they put the units together. That's the middle of the section. So that's one classroom, all right? That's a picture from the other side. As you can see, they're good-sized classrooms. All right, Garrett? Next up, we have progress being made at Old Fort. This is kind of an odd picture, but what I wanted to show here is the gym floor has been replaced. That is all new flooring there, and in order to do the last little bit of it, they had to remove the bleachers, so that, what you see in the front of that picture is the bleachers, and they've pushed them forward. They had to get disconnected from the wall, and if you will, Garrett, go to the next picture. And then they put a water-based polyurethane coat over that area, and they'll slide the bleachers back in. The next thing that they'll do there is they will sand, and they're beginning to sand hopefully tomorrow, and then they will paint the lines and put back the Old Fort emblem that was there before, and then go back with a water-based polyurethane over that. So I'm proud of the progress that we're making there. We still have a long way to go, but this is definitely steps in the right direction. We were in talks with the company that's doing this work. They're also supposed to be doing the flooring for us, so we hope to see some of that coming, and we'd like to be able to have the board out there to be able to do a walkthrough by the end of February. That's the goal. So flooring and doors, that's the next thing to go, and that'll be for the entire school. We are, I am proud of the progress that's going on outside of the school. As you know, that wasn't priority initially, but that has since then taken some priority. The Army Corps of Engineers has been doing quite a bit of debris removal there, and that's through our partners with the county. They've done a good job of transporting a whole lot of dirt and a whole lot of silt out of there and continuing to restore the stream bed there. So we're happy to report that. We are down to two heating units there that are, that need repair, and we have parts ordered on those, and then the units that were exterior to the building, those were those mini splint units, there were about 12 of those. We have a contract with Piatt, and they're supposed to be beginning work on that in soon enough, but with that, those are the, those are more for spaces like some of the closets in the back of the library. I mean, they're kind of the odd little places, so I'm not as, as, I guess I'm just saying, that's not one of those that is as pressing. So the heat is on, the heat is working, we're making some progress there. Flooring next, and followed by flooring will be the doors, and we are still hoping that we are right back in that school next fall. I would love to say, Ms. Ward, that we would like to see you guys be moving in after the school year in June. I know that's what you want to hear, and I think that that's very, very possible still at this point. So making some progress, not as fast as everybody'd like, but at the same time, I'm proud of where we are with it, and just more importantly, I'm proud of Ms. Ward and Ms. Rayfield for the work that you guys are doing, holding it together this year at Pleasant Fort. I think it's what they call it. Pleasant Gardens. Fort. Pleasant Fort. How do you say it?
Fort Pleasant.
Fort Pleasant, there you go. We go through this every time. It's an inside joke, but no, I'm proud of them and the work that they've done and their staff. You guys have really endured a lot this year, and we are very grateful for it. Thank you. And next up, we've got, Ms. Rampy's going to give us an update. We did have a meeting with FEMA, and I think I'm going to have a seat.
Good evening. If the board remembers, we had our exploratory call with FEMA back in November, and that was basically just to tell us we are approved for FEMA assistance and start the process. Last week, on January 8th, we had what is called the Recovery Scoping Meeting, and that starts our timeline. We have 90 days from that date, which would get us to April 11th, to identify any loss that we have for a claim. That doesn't mean it has to be completed, doesn't have to be paid for. We just have to create this disaster inventory list by April 11th that says, we have Old Fort School, we have a fencing in North Cove, you know, whatever the damages are, we have to make sure that we have those listed. We have really gotten a long ways in that process of getting that list, but we're going to meet with our state representative next week. That's the representative between us and FEMA. It's a liaison for us to go back through the list and make sure we are identifying anything. Even if insurance is going to pay for it, and that is our hope, that insurance will pay for most everything, we still have to identify that because just in case there's a portion or a deductible or anything like that that comes up, if it is on that list, then we can get FEMA assistance for it. So we have to list anything we can possibly think of, whether, like I said, be fencing, debris removal, staff time. Old Fort School has obviously a lot of damages, and so we will begin that process to identify that. As for as timing after that, after April 11th, and we have identified that, they will use that list for us to communicate out and back as far as when insurance covers things or does not cover things, we'll use that list. As far as when it's completed, the percentage completion, the estimated cost and things like that. So we are beginning the process, but FEMA is a reimbursement system, and they do not pay you ahead of time, so we will not settle with FEMA for quite a while. It'll be after insurance pays for everything, any other funding that we have, then we will settle with FEMA and see where our assistance is. I will say right now, our insurance, we have significant insurance for these type of claims, and it has been very beneficial, so we should have very minimal FEMA coverage, but we do have that to keep our out-of-pocket very minimal. So I feel pretty good about where we're at right now. Any questions on FEMA?
Ms. Rampy, if I can just remind the group, also, Chris Campbell has been in there with us during those meetings, and the benefit of having Chris be in there for us, and that's our board attorney, is not only is he in McDowell County, he's been in numerous other counties, so if there was anything to see there, he's going to catch it throughout that. He's been incredibly helpful. Ms. Rampy has done a tremendous amount of work there. I don't think folks really may completely understand the amount of work that goes into. She made that sound really simple, but there's been an incredible amount of work going on there between she and Mr. Trinks and the team that we've got here at the office too. So I appreciate the work that you guys are doing, and I know that when we talk about FEMA, that's not something that we're going to talk about, getting in a hurry to get any kind of check by any means. You know, I know that there's some districts, neighboring districts, that are still dealing with damages from 2017 and 18, so we're grateful that our insurance, we know, is a little different. The insurance has already came through, and it will continue to come through for us. The insurance has already came through, and it will continue to come through for us. FEMA is really like, it comes through on the back end, and we're really in good shape here, and just want to thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question? Nebo Elementary, we had a large project up there for erosion in front of the school. Is FEMA going to help us with that, or are we going to be able to correct that in later date, or is that something that's even being considered?
Anything like that, I will make a note on that one specifically. They will bring us back to where we were to make us whole where we were. They will not make it better than it was.
That was, yes, but it was not.
So but if we can get to where we were, then we can definitely note that, and they will look at that. There's a little bit of mitigation you can do as far as some other things as far as like Old Fort, if we need to lift something to prevent if we were flooded again some damage. But generally, it is just to get you back to the status that you were before the storm hit. So I will make a note on that, just to make sure that we've at least put that on that list, because that is what's very important, is that we get that on that list by April 11th, so that if we do have any claims after the fact. So I will get that in.
Thank you.
Ms. Rampy, I also think, you know, once we've got that list, we can kind of go over that with building and grounds at some point as well.
That's great.
Go ahead.
Alright. I'm on the agenda for the next. It's a budget and finance update. Obviously, the biggest thing going on right now is the FEMA and insurance claim and working with our insurance representative as far as getting approvals for that. But also, we did get notice last week that the audit was approved by the LGC. That's a little bit later than normal. I don't know if you guys remember, but generally in January is when we start, actually have the meeting with the finance committee. But we did get that approval last week. So what our process is, is that we schedule with the finance committee a detailed review of the audit with the auditors, and then after that, we will send the entire report to the board. Obviously, if the board needs any other information, we will do that. But our first step will be scheduling that with the finance committee to review the audit report. So we should do that in the next couple of weeks. And speaking with Mr. Schuford, we'll get that scheduled soon. Also, just a reminder that the financial statements are on the web under the transparency page. They're there every month, before the audit, before the board meeting every month, and it just shows where we're at year-to-date, by pot of money, by source of money, and it shows where about 50% spent this year, which through December 31st is 50% of the year. So that is on there for the public. It's also there for the board. At any moment, can see what that is by month. So right now, the report is through December 31st. So that's just a reminder that that is out there, if you guys are interested. And again, if there's anything else that you guys need from me, just let me know.
Are there any questions from Ms. Rampy? Anything anybody wants?
What about the budget process?
So the budget process-
And with the county?
So the budget process will start next month in full swing. We have a DPI conference. Generally, that's where we start getting our planning numbers, basically where they expect our student number should be. The thing that is good this year is that we're now in arrears, which means we know how many students are going to fund us on, because they funded us on last year's, which is this current year's number of enrollment. Where before, I don't know if you guys are familiar, if we went down 100 students, then they would adjust our funding after the second month. So now we do have that step, which is a little bit more concrete. But as far as the actual pots of money, we will get that in February. We will also start our allotment meetings, and that will be in about four weeks or so. We'll do that with the principals in talking about staffing allotments, and then we will bring that to the finance committee as well, before we bring that to the full board. Generally, we do that in a work session first, so we can discuss any priorities, things like that, and then we'll bring that to the full board. Unfortunately, the state budget is generally not as timely as the county budget. The county stays on track and gets a budget before the end of the school year, but a lot of times, the state budget is not, and so we are estimating a lot of state numbers. And then as you can, you know, see throughout the year, we have adjustments throughout the year, which are also harder to manage because they're changing our budgets up or down throughout the whole year. But you should see some budget discussions. We will start that next month, specifically with the finance committee. We will probably with the, when the auditors come to talk with the finance committee, we'll also do a beginning stages of budget talks then during that finance committee.
When you present the audit in February, is it, I'm trying to remember what we did. We didn't have the auditors come in, you presented it.
Right. We do not have the auditors. They are available, if that's what the board would prefer. In general, there's no findings, and so it's just financial information, and so we can just report that. But we can easily have the auditors come. That's no problem to have them come as well. It's whatever the board prefers. Good.
Thank you, Ms. Rampy.
Mr. Frank, if I could.
Sure.
I want to go back to Dr. Greit, what he said about the parking lots and stuff. I know some principals were out there shoveling snow, and also, I want to just thank you for all the extra stuff that you guys do with your spouses. I saw the pictures. Ms. Wilson, my tractor was on a job. I apologize, but I will get you in two weeks. When the snow comes back, that I'm praying for. It always happens when you're out of school, so I figured it'd be around the 20th, that time again. But, and also, answering a lot of texts and calls today from teachers, once the two-hour delay come out in regular time for staff. I talked to Dr. Greit in length about that. What teachers aren't privileged to hear is the road conditions and a lot of times on how they are around the whole county, and he made me aware of most of the streets on how clear they are. But he also reiterated that if there's anyone out there, teacher-wise, that feels danger or threatened by any kind of conditions, driveway, stuff like that, to reach out to your principal and make that adjustment as needed. It's not worth putting your life in danger to try to hurry and get there when you're having a delay anyway. So I wanted to reiterate that. It was another way for me to get all these teachers to listen to the board meetings, so you're hearing me now, to do that. But I wanted to pass that on if I could.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Okay, item number 13 on the agenda is new business, and first item on that new business is the 2025 board committee appointments. And those appointments have been made, and I have contacted each board member personally, and I feel like that they've been placed in positions that's going to help us charge forward with great things during 2025. And as Dr. Greit mentioned in his remarks, there's a lot of things going on. Real excited about the $7 million grant we got. We're excited about the possibility of starting the work on building a new school. And we've got the folks in the right positions. The board's not going to slow us down. We're going to push very hard, and there's a lot of things coming up, and I appreciate everybody willing to step up to the plate and accept their positions, and most of them basically are what they wanted to do anyway. And at this time, I am asking for a motion to accept the board committee appointments. Make a motion.
Second.
Yeah. Is he requesting a motion? We have a motion to accept the 2025 board committee appointments from Mr. Baker. We have a second by Ms. Helms. And is there any further discussion on those? With no further discussion, all those in favor, simply by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. And I thank you all, and I'm looking forward to a great year getting things done, hopefully. I know we will.
Okay, Ms. Helms. Ms. Helms, if you want to step up and give us an update on the school-based mental health grant, Ms. MacArthur. This team has worked hard with Ms. Rampy on securing these funds, and they're excited to tell you a little bit about it.
Absolutely. Mr. Frank, Dr. Greit, members of the board, thank you for allowing us to share tonight. It is with great excitement that I have this opportunity to share this wonderful news about a recent grant that we received, as well as the impactful work that Ms. MacArthur has been doing in the area of school-based mental health. I do want to take this opportunity to brag on her for just a few minutes. Ms. MacArthur is dedicated and a committed director who works tirelessly to ensure our students are happy, healthy, and thriving in their educational setting. And I think as you listen about the grant tonight, you will hear the works and the efforts that she has been putting forth on our most recent grant. During Dr. Greit's opening, he briefly shared with you about the United States Department of Education School-Based Mental Health Grant that we titled Heal, which stands for Helping Everyone Achieve in Life. We received approximately $6.8 million. I want to say that again, $6.8 million. And this is to begin here in January of 2025, and will be implemented over the next five years. The purpose of this grant is to increase access to school-based mental health services at all of the district's 15 schools. The district currently has only one credentialed school-based mental health provider, and we want to improve that. The grant will improve access to credentialed providers and providers to student ratio by hiring a new credentialed professional, including one licensed professional counselor who will serve as the project director, one LPC clinical supervisor, four social workers, and one school psychologist. It will also implement and engaging and growing our own initiative that will support the credentialing of five school counselors and six social workers.
Ashley MacArthur, and I'm the Student Services Director for McDowell County Schools. A large part of this grant is opportunities for recruitment and retention of school-based mental health professionals, and this has always been somewhat of a challenge for us. So we are very, very thankful and grateful for this opportunity to be able to extend some recruitment and retention strategies to help us get the best for our kids in the county. And so some of the things that were written into the grant would include some signing bonuses, some relocation bonuses, some annual stop-ins to maintain certifications, because a lot of the very clinical specialties can be quite costly to maintain and get enough hours to support that certification, so this would help take care of that. Some student internships, and that could also mean some folks who, as part of our Grow Your Own initiative, who would need to complete some internship hours, this would allow for that to be some paid internship times. We also worked in collaboration with McDowell Tech and App State to help work in some partnerships to help get some of our folks credentialed. We've also talked about some retention strategies, which would be retention bonuses, really trying to tailor professional development to the needs of the provider, or the clinician, or the social worker, whoever that mental health professional might be. Also tailored to the needs of our kids, because different ages have different needs, and we want to make sure that we are providing the best people with the best training. We also are talking about some induction support, like bringing them on to our district and getting them ready to serve kids. How do we make sure that that is a helpful and a useful process? We're also talking about some paid clinical supervision hours. So if you do go back and maintain and add on additional credentials, a lot of times that requires some supervisory hours from someone who already has that certification and has the supervisory certification in addition to that, and that can be costly, and oftentimes that has to come out of a person's own pocket. So this would allow those folks to keep their money and be able to utilize the grant funds to expand their skills. We, throughout the grant writing process, we met with several different community organizations to help see if they would be on board with us, and so we are excited to collaborate not only with App State, not only with McDowell Tech, but we also hope to collaborate with CULA, YMCA, the McDowell County Partnership for Substance Abuse, our law enforcement partners, and various community counseling and mental health agencies. We have expected outcomes for our kids, and we really want to see improvements in our student attendance, an increase in our positive behaviors, decrease in our out-of-school suspension rates, an increase in access to mental health services, as well as increased certification, retention, and knowledge of our providers. And ultimately, what we want over the next five years is to improve student mental health and well-being for all of McDowell County.
And we are open to any questions that you might have.
Congratulations. Easy question. When we hire a social worker, let's use that as an example, that's a school employee, not a DSS employee, and they collaborate with DSS, but DSS isn't not in the school system?
No, we currently have social workers. They are what's called school social workers, and they maintain a North Carolina school social work license, which is very similar to like a teaching certification. There's specific coursework and a license they have to obtain, and they do not work with DSS. They collaborate, of course, to make sure that our kids are supported, but they work in a whole separate capacity. They're really about working to improve attendance and working to improve families' access to resources in order to help remove barriers, and so we can be proactive so students can come to school ready to learn, so they can soak in all the knowledge that we have to give them, so their futures can be brighter. And so, yes, these social workers would not be from DSS, these would be school social workers.
And then with something like mental health, which is much more specialized, can you contract that out, or are those employees also that we hire?
Under this grant, we cannot contract. These would be direct hires.
Is this sort of, it sounds like it's almost a recruitment program, possibly?
That's a portion of it, but, you know, with $6.8 million over the next five years, that's a small portion of it. The majority of it is going to be to actually get additional folks in front of our kids to work with them and to really work with their families, too. Yeah. But one of the barriers that we've had as a district when it comes to finding folks in that realm is that the whole community needs them, and so, you know, if they work for a private entity or a private agency, you know, we are, you know, based on a state pay scale, and we have, you know, we just don't have the access to some of the incentives that private organizations and private businesses can provide to those folks. And so this is going to be a real game changer for us in terms of getting the best folks in front of our kids, is being able to help them relocate, get the certifications that they need, maintain their certifications. That's what we're most excited about.
I'll tell you what, money for, anytime you get money, it's great, but money for mental health is even greater. We definitely got the need here, and just our hats off to you both for what you've done, and I know everybody here is very appreciative of it. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, item 14, is approval consent agenda. And of course, any of those items that are on the consent agenda can be pulled and voted on individually, or we can vote on them as a whole. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is printed, or if anyone has an item, they won't pull it, now's the time to have a motion on it.
I'll make a motion we approve as printed.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Suddles to approve the consent agenda, and we have a second by Mr. Schuford. At this time, is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay.
Did I second it?
Well, you both did.
We both did. It's yours.
It's okay, you got it.
I'm already talking to you.
I got it, you take it.
Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. We appreciate it. At this time, item number 15 on the agenda is a closed session request, and we will request to go into closed session in just a second. Let me get the reasons here. Have you got that? I don't know what I do. I do. Okay, at this time, we're requesting a closed session, and under subsection A1, to prevent disclosure of privileged or confidential student information pursuant to 20 USC 1232G FERPA and GS 115C 402E include student discipline and student transfer releases. FERPA and GS 115C 402E includes student discipline and student transfer releases. Under subsection A1, to prevent disclosure of privileged or confidential personal information pursuant to General Statute 115C 319-321 includes employee matters. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion, it'll go into closed session, just a second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to go into closed session from Mr. Schuford and a second by Mr. Baker. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand at 7:12 PM. That's unanimous.